Good evening, directors, staff, and members of the public listening. I will now call this June 22nd, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. Due to the current local state and federal emergency declarations and guidance regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Minneapolis Board of Education is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, with members participating remotely via interactive technology. This is a discussion meeting and no votes will be taken. The meeting is being livestreamed on our website and on Channel 15, and a recording will be available in both places. Directors and presenters, please remember to mute yourselves when not talking to avoid background noise. And for the benefit of all of us, and in particular, for our interpreters and for those using closed captions, please remember to speak clearly, slowly, and into your microphone. Director Polly, will you please call the roll for the record?
Director Arneson. Director Alameen.
Here.
Director Ali. Director Surya.
Here.
Director Rins. Director Jordan.
Here.
Director Caprini.
Present.
Director Polly, Director Allison.
Here.
Student Rep. Gaver Mascal.
Thank you. Our topic this evening is an enrollment update. Directors, we will take questions after the staff presentation. Superintendent Graff, please go ahead.
They're working on the sound, but the rulers won't want it followed, so when you hear a noise, you're not going to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. You gave me the reminder to unmute. So, thank you Superintendent Chair Allison, members of the board. It was my pleasure to have the opportunity to present enrollment numbers to you tonight. And, you know, I was lamenting before I, you know, as we were putting together this presentation, that, you know, there's a lot of numbers tonight and a lot of, you know, some charts, but certainly not the color and, and, and I think in some regards, the excitement that previous presentations have had. But I, but I also want to articulate that the numbers you'll see tonight are part of a larger narrative, as superintendent mentioned, relative of the Conference District Design and our promise of delivering a well-rounded education regardless of zip code under the goal, three goals of equity academics and sustainability. Again, as a reminder for folks, the premise is to, is to centralize magnets, have stronger community schools. These stronger community schools will allow us to increase market share and as a direct response to parent needs. And so as we adjusted boundaries and as a result, and you'll see the numbers tonight, it allowed us to really invest resources into literacy, into ensuring that every student across the district next year has access to fifth-grade music, that we don't have such large class variations in enrollment between our high schools depending on where the students live, that we're able to provide mental health support. We will have mental health support now across the district, in every school regardless of zip code. STEM for all. You know, I was surprised as we went to the CDD, that over half of our students did not have access to after-school programming. And so, again, for stronger community schools, we'll be able to have after-school programming, equity training for all, and of course, a focus on climate. So the numbers do and will tell a larger story in terms of a brighter promise for our students beginning Fall '21. Go to the next slide. So tonight we'll talk about enrollment projections. We'll share some of the impact of the first year in terms of the reduction in small schools, other schools below 250 or below. We have race-identifiable sites. Those are sites as of October 19. Our integration plan at the time were 86% or above students of color. And so we're seeing a dramatic reduction in RRS sites. Schools that are 80% or more free-rented lunch, we're seeing a slight reduction there. And then we'll talk about, take a look at some magnet school data in particular. And then we'll have Associate Superintendent Cox walk us through the appeals process and some of the data associated with that. Because again, this is, anytime you're going through a boundary change and making adjustments relative to enrollment, you know, there, there are some challenging cases and situations that, that we want to respond to. And, and so Associate Superintendent Cox has helped lead us on this process and she'll have an opportunity to share that process with you and some data that we've seen as a result of that.
Next slide. So, just keep it in mind that when we look at these enrollment projections, certainly, you know, these are comprised of growth rates. You know, we take a look at kindergarten enrollment numbers, attrition, so that a sense of which students are staying in the district. And that's the opposite, that would obviously be our retention rate. Immigration is something that, that makes a difference, right? We saw, for example, in the past, four years under the Trump administration, declines in our... So, so those are certainly considerations. But, but as you focus on the enrollment projections here, what I want to point out is, as we began, you know, with projection, it actually began with a projection of 1329, so next year, we're going to be down to 1329. You know, this is a result of the pandemic. Also within this, you are going to see some impact regarding the CDD. We're looking at, it's all easing split roughly. About 250 students were ended up losing as a result of the pandemic, about 250 or so were losing as a result of the CDD. Both are certainly better than we could expect. But you do see a decline in enrollment, and under the premise of the Conference District design, what we're anticipating is that we have strong community schools, innovative magnets. You will see over the course of time, the decline and the rate of change, the decline in students that we're losing, so that when you get to FY '25, we'll even out in our enrollment, and then we'll start gaining FY '26. So, predicated certainly on assumptions, we do believe that as we have more consistency across the district in terms of the areas of equity, sustainability, stronger quality of services, and that, and that stronger academic, that we will bring students back to Minneapolis public schools. As a reminder, we have about 60% market share. So there's thousands of students that can here and make Minneapolis public schools their first choice. So this is extremely doable, very optimistic in the pandemic. We want to point out to you, this is a slide from AMSD, and this is really pointing at, I think, the impact of the pandemic in particular. But the point of this is to show that not only Minneapolis, we were 2.8% points for our projections, but in Okeah and St. Paul, Seale, Bloomington, also saw declines in enrollment below what they originally projected. And so certainly the pandemic has impacted us. But if I, we go to the next slide, we can take a look at our kindergarten enrollment trends. Because there is a sign of optimism. I'm going to just identify two particular areas highlighted in yellow. The first is just our kindergarten placements. So we're taking pull-in data from 2021 this year. And you see that our kindergarten numbers were declining, school year 2019, 2020, 2021, we're at 28.64. So we're down relative to this time last year, about 140 or so students. And so that, that decline, again, going back to the previous slide, it doubled in terms of the number of kindergarten students. That's why it's still about 60 more, so relative to our trend that we previously had. But if you look at the next, the further down this chart in yellow, no-shows placed for the following year. What this is essentially saying is that these are students that, that as we return back to school, we saw came back at the kindergarten level. So we actually brought back about 129 students back as we returned back to school. So that is a positive sign, and it's actually allowing for that popularity as originally projected. So a very positive sign there that we are seeing students, we did see students come back. That's the move back to in-person learning from distance. Next, I want to point your attention to magnet enrollments and requests, and this is taking a look at free-rented lunch. And so these are magnet schools, and I believe like eight of the 11 schools that we identified as magnets for next year were formerly racially identifiable schools. And that was a deliberate attempt as we're centralizing the magnets to really, you know, increase accessibility to both magnets across different economic and racial lines. What we're looking for here are two things. We're looking at the current, the school current free-rented lunch. And then we want to take a look at the lottery numbers. So you see lottery one. We had a second lottery to support economic integration. So we committed to looking at our first lottery, seeing how that went. Doubled down in recruitment for lottery two. But the goal is that we want our lottery, those applying, that free-rented lunch percentage in these cases to be below the free-rented lunch percentage at the school. Okay, so for example, look at the Thun, so the second row. Current free-rented lunch population right now is 90%. The first lottery, 73% of applicants qualified for free-rented lunch. So you did see that those applying just support more economic diversity. As the time the second lottery came around, and we redoubled our efforts to support economic integration, right, 31% of applicants qualified for free-rented lunch. So both lotteries, overall 60% applied where did not qualify for free-rented lunch. You know, and the current population is 90%. So this is just a snapshot that's showing that we are economically integrating our schools because those applying, the lottery process are interested in the economic integration and the racial integration. And so there's some very positive pieces here. I'll use another example. Let's take a look at Green. Green current population, 85% free-rented lunch. The first lottery, 36% free-rented lunch applicants, 36% qualify for free-rented lunch. Lottery two, 52%, and so you are seeing again the economic integration and subsequent with the racial integration of our schools. Right, and, and so you'll see this obviously as a reduction of racial identified schools. Really good story here. Certainly can go more into that. A really positive sign here. See also at the bottom, it's really fantastic. Solomon, really good story. Solomon's a, a school that is actually in a very integrated neighborhood. And as we went through the proceeding process, what we're finding is that many of our schools, the neighborhoods were actually more integrated in some cases and in the school. So what you're seeing at Solomon, for example, is you're seeing a number of families who are choosing Solomon. So currently they're 87% free-rented lunch. First lottery, 51% qualify for free-rented lunch. The second lottery, the second push, 22% free-rented lunch qualified. So you see that, again, those applying are supporting the economic integration of our magnets. And this is just taking a look at our student of color populations, those locations too. Using another example here, just take a look at, you know, take a look at Thun again. And you're seeing now, if we recall, one of the commitments we made was to support the transitions. We were allowing students who currently attend at Thun, and it's a race-identifiable school, to stay at Thun if they so choose. And so I think it's a positive that so many students at Thun chose to stay at Thun, that showed that they were valued in the education they were receiving at that location. As I showed in the previous slide, the economic integration, you're seeing the free-rented lunch percentages go down. Most free-rented lunch, students of color, not as dramatic. But again, as I show the next slide to you, you know, what you're going to see is we want to take a look at our kindergarten numbers. We'll take a look at the kindergarten numbers. Because the kindergarten numbers are really what I call your true magnet. So this is the first grade level at extracell five and K8s in which you're truly are not having students currently attending. So these are new streets. So let me give you an example. I'm taking a look at Green, that was the example I used. Green is currently their kindergarten's 87% free-rented lunch and 9% students of color. Their kindergarten enrollment, 52% free-rented lunch, and 68% students of color. So this is an example of how a magnet program, you're actually both reducing a, a, a school that has a high concentration of free-rented lunch and also a high concentration of新生 in popular schools, which is nice to be called. You know, you're also, but you're seeing that across the board. I want to point that out, that you're seeing that across the board, these kindergarten numbers in which you're seeing economic and racial integration across the board with, with our, with our magnets. Again, showing that the taste, there is a taste for economic integration and racial integration. That's a very positive thing, and truly testament to our communities for wanting to do some specialized programming and also in some cases, supporting the goals and the need of racial integration. We also want to look deeper and take a look at the magnet requests and enrollment by race and by free-rented lunch and special education. Because we're looking at, we want to look at proportionality. One of the concerns with the Equity Versus Impact Assessment regarding the placement, EDIA, was that there was a concern that you were not, you were not getting families of color, families that qualify for free-rented lunch, families who qualify for special education, that they weren't applying to pay in our magnet programs at the same rate as our, as our white families or families who do not qualify for free-rented lunch or general education students. And so one of the things we want to take, we want to take a look at is proportionality. So for example, let's use the African-American line here. At the kindergarten level, African-American families represent roughly 34% of our student population, but actually represent 57% of the total requests. And so you see that in some cases, it's actually overproportionate. As we dig deeper though, what we're finding is that we're seeing more middle income, upper income as well as, right, those times bump our free-rented lunch. But there's a more diverse group of African-American families that are choosing to participate in our magnet programming. I want to move down and have you take a look also at special education. One of the commitments under the Conference District Design is that we wanted to make sure that students with special needs have the opportunities to pay in our magnet programming. So you do see special education students represent 10% of our kindergarten population, you know, based on the requests and then based on the percent of enrollment, and then 21% of those requested. So that's a positive. You're seeing also those positive things in terms of the free-rented lunch acceptance. So one thing to point out is that our white student population here, you know, is actually under, so you see 40% of the enrollment, 19% of the requests. So we need to do a better job improving our white families to support that goal of integration. And that's ongoing work. And I think that certainly there's efforts underway to do that. But I will say that following national trends regarding the resource, typically with the integration, the reason why these schools, you do see a trend that first your middle income comes down with the color, coming back, right, to district, coming back, integrating magnets, and then your white families will begin to follow shortly after. But this is really good news, year one, really positive trend, and it is going the direction that we anticipated. See the same percentage rate, I mean, it's something similar. So again, you're looking at proportionality here. You know, you see special education, you see proportional percentage enrollment versus almost a percentage request. So that's a good sign. And so testament, Associate Superintendent Cox, to your work in the generation team. Still, you see the under participation with white families. And you do see, there's some overproportionality representation for African-Americans, Hispanic families. And that's not necessarily a negative thing. So just something to take a look at to make sure that we're not, we're not offering the opportunities from an equity lens for our families, both from the racial standpoint, economic, so special needs, and yellow as well. High school, magnet Congress projected the draft at sixth grade. Again, this is showing our free-rented lunch and student of color populations. Again, those sixth grade classes, so you talked about kindergarten at the middle level, six, seven, eight, that new level would be at a Franklin in particular, or Anderson. Those would be new grade levels, right? So this is the first grade levels that don't include transition numbers. So you do see Anderson's more integrated, both economically as well as students of color, Franklin as well, and then Jefferson, it's not there, now Jefferson is there, interesting.
Marka arren ta wahan dun ya ena aragnaya wahan aragnaya nabarraya ardeidu kayyaranayan. Marka hududaya esbeddala ya. Marka arfaes at 2021 school da. Ena kayyaran la wahan le kon ton sanatka dami madamba lo sohana yowena sugnu. Marka arren ta arren wanal sen marka se lo ferio. Marka huna shilla rabay wetae. Marka wahan kudamana esala la watanatka marku damat. Hadda five was urta gal. Marka arren ta warla yavle. So 2019 ki, shakha de marka lablabay. Afarila watan school wahan lo arka ene ndihi. Marka ene edis 6% dihi ndad midabka. Marka arren ta marka samaya ardeidaya da. Eh, 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 marka si dietel la wahan le kiba. La hatla watanikubba. Wahan sanatka damu ferina labadiya to bonki schoolo sohosa wahan lo ferneya. Ena si dietel la hita kabana dan tatkamidabka le. Marka, marka dijmeda lo ferio, hal kusu nukdaba. Dijmedu se ataba. Marka arren badan ba talashaka. Tan wahan etarza, harrahad emdega, shanta sanayla sohosa da. En dijmedo eto, wahan arka ena iyan, schoolo du kayyaranaya. La tan afarila laye eto man. Ta sohano galana esena gulkene an gernu. Warifian. Wari mejugnu, marka lo ferio, number ka yaran ti se, la ardeid badan ba yaranaya. Marka ardeid marka la ferio, si dietel la wahan marka la ferio, sohomo wahan le kiba. Anda feria, marka ardeid badan, wa yaranesa, arren ta. Marka si dietam wahan le kiba kayyar ene, haq mehlayan. Lakini, arren badan, si yaranesa yaranaya wahan le kiba. School ka, hadda, illa hadda wahan man. Eh, dihka yarat, ardeid yarat, war naith wahan le kiba. Marka ninth grade badunaya na ndihi ferio. Arren, anahora ushake wahan wae, alba beda karkoz wahan wae. Arren ta high school ka. Marka ena kadalwa karduna sha high school ka, aragnaya yadu la ferneyo, so zibkorka idgihi. Marka arreidu haq beulaihin high school ka. Marka wahan high school sah bhaol o ardeid, magala kale. Magaloi ki kala la wakun, oqfaya arka esa. Marka arren ta qiyasta wataya da. Marka ardeid badan o ardeid da. Kabda hammet kamedo wahan high school da. Eni, haq gamorlka esia du. Marka kambasku la wahan le wahan le ardeidan hasano. Marka, kaharga sah la wahan le wahan le kudabka, marka seharatka la wabla. Marka ninth grade ka, marka ferino, enrollment ti se. Sanatka la watan, la watan, high school ferina, sanatka la sohafa. Etu onka. Marka hoga, wahan koreinaya arka esa. Hoga esbeddalkasa da arka esa. Marka ardeid wartha edison, wa ento udhai esa, metkasta. Rosafial. Wahan wohosbu dagai. Kaso wastelfti sah hoga ba, ahosu dagai. Washba sidhoka kale, walestos sidhoka kale. Marka hoga gur tanka, daoska wahan arka esa. Marka, xabro da, anheli no, marki dijmeda ayemo juna esa. Qabka, an usu unleyo, judka, anheneenan aragnowasida yada. Wa handuina yana adeyo. Arren ta ferka, wa albe mu muta high school ka. Arin ta farka, wa albi mu muta high schoolka. Marka, baqolki ba, so du ney shan, o arday da, wahaa ke, maden digma da banana ke da. Marka. Wahashakha, adu fiyano, laqabtu, yarin ta yada, sanatka, hada, yasar, la soo da fai. Marka, datkana, teamkana, si fiyam, wahashakha, arin ta, sa yanduri, yana da shago, wa arin xasa, arin ta yada. Marka, marki la firi, bablu, shigga, digma da, yarday da, shakha, fiyam ba, isamein, marketingka, ama, hayesis ke schoolka. Marka, marka, democratic, fira, no, san duina, sanatka, hada, wa marka, fira, sonai, sehalat, weykan. Marka, ala samwa, si da si, wahadara, malaha. Henri, hosbu, uyar, wahayar, marka, fira, se bablu, shigisa. Loth, hosbedel, weyba, kajera, marka, arday du, weyke guriya. Marka, anegro, so fil, no, korba yu, ayay, beridik tigiri, marki la firiyo. Labadan, loqadu, arin ta kaha la, isay, Anderson. Marka, arin ta, inay, arday du, rollgariya, weyrebin. Marku, duin ba isena, arday du, soosku, hosba, udhaiyan. Marka, Anderson, schoolka, ayay, programka, adaya, Roosevelt, adaya. Marka, marka, soosku, in, arin, Rachel, eyesan, no, quonin, ayana, oru, umana du, marka, ninth grade ka, marki la firiyo. So, was, was, si, si. Ta yada, no, wahana, fira, na sanatka, sooshoza, in, isbedel kay ma du, kasi, wasa galat. Marka, marka, forty-five, bay, ahi, marka, so, du, sa, da, wahbaqolki ba, fartan. Washbu, marka, hoga, dat badan, o kale duun, ba, se gay ma dai. Marka, arday du, inay, kale duun, a shub, badan, ay mana yana, badan arkaaysa. Marka, number ka, anka, la, taswa, adis, ala qabtan, wa ishega, sanla, handuina, inan, cox, iringgi, ayay, duina, siday, hausho, sootu, du shego. Yu, wahaya, wa muhimka, arin tan, baun, hududad, isbedelaya. Sidha, a, se, an utayer, no, arday de, na, adi, lo, ba, du, hududha, ai. From, leda, ay, osada, amblas, mancha, hoga, arday du, eh, gushu, da, ay, hoga, challenge, ku noqonaysa. Cox, ayay, an kuri, jina, ya, hausha, si, usuun, wa du. Morba, basanta, wahmasanta, kormera, ala sen, director, yelka, kale, wa kufar, haasana, ina, ndla, jugo. Marka, wa topic muhiman, wahana, digma da, siday, wahu, du, du, weshu, wahajira, ya. O, kab, wahaya, mehshi, ribin, melana, galaya, marka, waham, wahaina, qab kale, wahana, wana, ina, mu, ta, weshu, sku, inay, histan, qab, ay, ku share, gariyan. Arima, xadrufa, haasana, yajirta, inten, na, garin, go, an, ku duin, beyi, eh, schoolka, mehsha, ku, wahanda, ina, ina, shago, ku metigan. Uke, ku, ba, yeh, digmo, yu, dad, mental health, ka, ku, ba, na, kometai, dad, ma, ha, o, health, team kometai, cancel, yu, dad, psychological, social workers, yu, dad, badan, o kale duun, prince, mu, rayal, kormer, rayal, dad, special education ka, yu, senate, wahbar, shada, yu, dad, kama, ta, iska, ha, ya. Marka, marka, datka, duina, ina, duina, no, sidha, intan, wah, duina, intan, namiska, kenin, wa, wan, ku, ah, balai, guru, bahan, in, ah, ku, haasana, haqab, ka, hu, wahdan, digma du, siday, ushu, otu, wa ku, haasana, sidoh, kale, wahanska, ah, ban, inay, arin, ajiba, no, onto, onto, adi, arday de, bedel, kuda, mel, kale, lu, ku, xoro, mehshi, da, na, hin. Marka, fira, no, kereter, yada, ama, qabka, lo, diban, o, fira, na, arin, shuru, da, han, la, sooshoza, la, fira, ku, wahana, fira, na, afimatka, yu, mental healthi ga. Marka, mental health, serviceka, yarshakha, na, schoolka, sa, wahana, schoolka, hadar, na, maalimin, ta, yu, ta, gar, da, hale, ya, qofka, so, schoolka, ina. Marka, xabrot, umala ha, dat, hoga, eh, guni, eh, wahu, baraya, yajira, sidoh, kale, dat, kalo, iska, hi, andatka, wahu, qabta, ayay, jiro, ha, ya, mehshi, schoolka, kasho, du. Anaga, agensiga, anagu, wey, ugi, hin, isbedel, ka, an, samein, na, wahana, kasha, kena, na, si, du, jira, halmit, o, wahbar, shina, samein, no, ilmu, in, o, halo, ruh, ha, ya, o, yu, usub. Marka, in, entu, mehsha, usubela, la, kisi, in, lo, da, ayay, fiyam, mehla, duina, yu, in, la, yeh, halo, wahawi, arday du, na, isan, haasis, kelinin, inay, sa, dibata, kenin, hoga, tarama, mehsha, usub, hoga, inay, dibata, okan, to, walgaya ba. Ya, ma, mehsha, usub, ay, hoga, okan, to, sa, main, yala, to, ma, du, hoga, arin ta, yada, wa, fira, na, in, bo, in, ay, jirti, in, kale, wa, fira, na, sidoh, kale, wahana, fira, na, sidha, ay, schoolka, ob, marika, ran, yu, afimatka, ay, samein, ay, an, or, ku, duin, ba is. Arima, an du, samein, na, wa, arima, ayaka. Marka, akbaratka, eh, shega, gyan, na, fira, no, case five, mahaf, fira, no, kontoni, la bo, ayay, jira, osadai. Wahana, osana, shan, ta, so, maanay, adu, ta, in, baqolki ba, sehali, leh, leh, illa, sidida, kontoni, ku, ayay, ha, osi, kyan, sadai, sagal, ayay, na, balai, baqolki ba, sidid, yu, tu, na. Marka, sehali, adil, ala, biton, na, kontoni, tu, du, bo, osadai, ayay, afar, ayay, na, osana, baqolki ba, tu, du, ba. Teamka, abilka, am, rafanki, wali, wa, fira, na, case, sa, dibata, badan, na, wey, jiran, o, an, la, wey, la, kaden, wahadi, shega, ina, go, an, ka, naga, har. Allahu, yaht, ishik, adi, na, isan, no, weshu, sa, in, kasa. Marka, handuina, ina, damay, arin, liesan, na, badan, ku, baran, a, jira, talu, haya, arin, ulasa, o, borasa, sa. Marka, arday de, ma, ad, bay, wun, wahaya, firla, leda, ay, arday da, yu, assi, go, rafan, ku, da, eh, application, gigeri, in, wahana, duin, ina, ina, la, shakha, ina, arin tan, in, senar, ay, no, quoto, ay, na, dat, ku, forsa, du, hela, ina, ina, kale, wahana, aragnae, dad, number, kale, duun, o, arday da, qar, schoola, da, qar, o, yer, marka, wah, badan, o, ina, samein, ayay, ta, ay, arin tan, madama, kasha, kena, inay, senan, no, quoto, o, ay, kuflato. Marka, arday du, wahanda, ina, ina, ku, so, no, siday, no, onto, to, siday, wa, ka, to, had, qabar, ina, wahana, ina, sanatka, special, qar, in, bed, transition, badan, bo, ha, marku, halgaya, ba, in, bahet, badan, ay, jirin, lakini, wahana, haq, jina, in, qab, kenin, la, bila, bo, in, weshu, sku, ni, arday de, no, histan, marka, fira, na, amblas, man, san, tak. Marka, arin ta, sa, igla, soota, kormera, adi, ka, ayay, ku, so, uli, na, ya, ina, so, hal, weh, qaba.
Thank you, Senior Officer Moore, for your presentation. Chair Ellison, at this point, this does conclude our portion of the presentation. And so I think please stand ready to hear any questions.
Marka, weh, so, hal, qaba, eh, or, ku, ay, qaba, an, ayay, o, ge, juwa, medu, na. Adi, an, so, la, qabin, na, qurab, no, onas, masanta, kormera. Masantin, presentation, gina, gudi, ga, adi, adu, rumo, qabtan, da, anta, taga, isan. Adan, so, al, qabtan, you, comment, director, siku, a, san, darka, joga, an, san, ushega, ina, so, al, qabtan. Director Kaprini.
Thank you, Chairlson, and thank you to your officer, Moore, and your officer, Cox, for the presentation. Two questions.
La, so, al, da, yan, qaba.
First, what are the efforts that schools are doing to recruit families? And that's part of it, and then specifically, white families. So that's two parts, and then the second one is, were any of the schools that students were placed in, were any of the staff from the school, the receiving school, part of the conversation in, you know, what their school has to offer, you know, just the whole transition.
Marka, schoolka, qar, la, bedali, yana, jira, marka, ku, la, bedalka, an, am, afar, garene, yu, schoolka, adi, ma, no, ah, ta, ad, sala, ha, weshu, wahaa, jira, unugu, du, wahana, raja, ya, Abdullah, yu, team, gisa. Ina, khair, kano, ona, yu, la, yam, weshu, la, yega, ina, ha, ya, na, surdu, ya, na, comfortable, ka, degan. Ta, so, yu, sa, ashay. Adan, duina, ina, ke, juwa, ku, ino, masantai, so, ashad, juwak, tey. Marka, teamken, ina, at, ken, tey, timu, xuriste, so, ashad, ken, tey, o, ku, masantai. Marka, tan, lotterie, ku, wa, di, wah, kasho, bahay, number, ra, de, kasho, bahay, lakini, marki, tamba, lotterie, gas, wahaa, jira, arday du, schoola, badan, o, ken, eh, wah, an, isay, jirai, kab, badan, kenin, wa, ta, schoolka, sa, ta, maga, out, prinsipal, Abdullah, shakha, fiyam, ku, ken, eh, no, video, ken, eh, o, akbar, ta, ku, ken, eh, social media. Marka, arin ta, wa, arin, an, la, share, gare, ina, schoola, da, kale, marka, video, yu, kale, badan, ba, arin ta, sa, ay, se, bu, tey. Marka, marka, qar, es, bana, she, bana, san, na, school, o, kale, duun, a, shaw, school, badan, ta, so, ay, ku, uftan, to, ma, to. Marka, wahai, behay, yon, resoska, sa, familla, da, inay, dibu, fira, yan, ama, ay, monasi, yan, schoolka, wahana, ku, daraya. Arin ta, dibu, xurista, ayay, misajada, weshu, sku, lo, qurana, yu, wah, soota. Marka, no, wahna, inan, interview, gare, no, yu, tat, ke, dorana, bo, soos, usub, ay, jira, school, usub, lo, wahana, yu, so. Marka, arin, badan, o, maalimian, usub, abel, dimada, imana, yajira, o, sanatka, namayan, marka, mahar, jirin, ina, schoola, da, discussion, ka, sa, qayb, kama, da. Ina, illa, august, ina, la, marki, schoola, da, lo, so, no, du, o, surdu, wey, no, weshu, sku. Sidoh, kale, wahana, jirin, ina, weshu, sku, lo, enteslo, diblo, fira, na, yu, marka, in, schoolka, bela, no. Marka, yarday du, building, kay, ma, dan, o, yar, kan, mehla, usub, o, awa, isay, joki, ta, so, qayb, kama, da, ama, elementary, adan, ama, high schoola, adan, wahana, fira, ina, ina, na, bar, da, badan, o, dibu, xurista, ay, ken, tey. Lakini, wahanda, ina, adeyo, arin ta, school levelka, eh, prinsipalka, schoolka, la, mit, gare, ina, yu, gara, na, wa, ayay, never, in, schoolka, yu, schoola, da, lo, bedalaya. Marka, senior office, ah, more, yel, ko, ayay, nu, aska, wey, dira, yu, adi, wah, kara, ayay, wahana, o, na, hey, school, lo, magna, di, yo, lo, badan, wa, samein, na, yu, wahbar, shada, xask, ah, ah, na, ta, so, ah, na, yu, weshu, sku, in, ay, ku, re, gan, mehshi.
Thank you, Superintendent, I can just add, I know that.
Marka, wah, masanta, ina, ma, more, marka, ma, alenka, si, hoga, yu, shakha, yey. Marka, prinsipal, ku, bi, liste, da, arday du, imare, schoolka, osada, yey, fong, kon. Marka, schoola, du, wa, ma, mu, hima. Marka, arin ta, san, arin muhim, ayay, no, ona, sa. Ta, so, wahana, ona, sa, arin, usub. Marka, muhim, ina, aragna, school, maalenka, oh, la, la, yaf, mille, da, yu, wah, schoolka, arin ta, wah, jira, schoola, da, prinsipal, ki, schoola, yu, wa, la, la, da. Marka, arin badan, o, la, arka, yaya, jira, guriya, yu, fong, call, fom, leda, sa, hala, lo, ge, juwab, ayay, jira, to, sala, ha, ma, more, la, no, tha, yu, wah, weshu, sku, si, wa, na, xar, o, shakha, da, yeng, wah, da, surdu, wa, du, tha, yey, tey. Marka, eh, eh, schoolda, badan, o, ma, more, yash, ay, samein, ay, ba, jira, wahana, kale, lo, du, ri, arin ta, wah, schoolda, ina, marka, arin ta, wah, ke, to, ay, an, arka, ina, wahana, samein, na, arin kale, la, bu, na, arima, magnetka, schoola, da. Eh, Jefferson, yu, Bethune, salama, la, la, shakha, giri, wah, school. Marka, wahanda, ina, ina, bar, gare, ni, da, kale, eh, haq, la, firi, la, inch. Lakini, mahana, gana, ku, ras, badan, eh, dan, ka, kale, lu, gosh, ku, dagma, da, so, that, dat, ku, is, da, hgal, arwut, ay, yu, jiro, arin ta, wahawa, yu, gur, arwut, ay, arin, ina, ke, qayb, qatan, elek, programka, elek, electronic, eh. Marka, chal, programka, marka, wah, arin, is, da, hgal, o, la, fira, arin ta, yada, wah, at, ku, wah, fira, na, yana. Weshu, sku, eh, is, da, hgal, heller, schoolka, elma, heller. Arima, badan, du, dal, ke, na, samein, na, arin ta, marka, hoga, juwab, badan, ina, shaw, la, ta, shakha, da, in, badan, ba, samein, ay, haru, tu, ka, shago, madama, kama, bedalaya, hoga, ulas, wah, jira, hil, fong, kon, la, 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 yu, dat, ka. Sidoh, qofka, se, gay, shaks, yam, ba, dat, la, la, marka, dat, ku, surdu, wey, tu, weshu, sku. Marka, arin ta, inay, shakha, isay, wah, la, ta, yu, number ka, euro, ku, re, ma, mini, weshu, sku, adan, ka. Marka, haq, la, hin, haq, marka, number ka, ad, fiyam, ta, yu, marka, fira, marka, wahanda, ina, weshu, sku, yu, marka, ku, wa, da, arin ta, samein, ay, ta, yu, hadan, pandemic, kasho, bahna. O, du, di, no, kasho, bahna, kale, duun, a, sha, ha, ma, di, ab, liskad, a, zay. Marka, number ka, na, arka, yu. Marka, ad, fiyam, ta, marka, kima, ad, be, madon, ta, ulad, hai. Yu. Yu, is, da, hgal, da, kale, eh, in, ay, dat, ku, diar, mi, him, wa, na, gire, ina, mehshi, yada. Marka, wahanda, ina, misma, ina, la, la, shakha, da, fiyam, ay, qabtan, eh, shakha, yu, ka, samein. Wah, arka, yu, wah, shakha, yana, yu. Marka. Marka, arin ta, afimat, ku, du, ina, madon, ta, si, yana, afimat, kay, ma, kale, ba, arin tan, arka, ina, arin ta, yada, yu. Cox, ina, rally, gali, ayay, rabah. Marka, eh, ina, arash, egin, ayay, kah, ma, hay. So, ash, wahana, di, ku, men, si, tu, in, ay, magalan, juwab, ta, anu, anu, shakha, da, da, ay, sa, yu, dibu, xuriste, yu, anu, kufar, haasana, yashakha, da, fiyam, na, la, qab, tey. Marka, wahanda, ina, yu, gedu, inu, inay, magalan, dag, district, tu, dagma, du, wah, dag, ayay, ina, efki, ina, ka, magalan, ayay, duina, yu. Yu, iska, shika, dag, ayay, arin tan, middle, schoolka, yu, high schoolka, iska, shika, wah, arin, far, ha, la, wahana, sa, ta, shakha, da, fiyam, la, qabtan.
Yeah, I would just add to what Senior Officer Moore said.
Marka, more, wah, raiba, duina, ina, ku, daro, marka, arday, usub, ayay, jira, special education, ka, o, isma, o, ku, sa, san, eh, department, ku, si, fiyam, be, or, shakha, isay, in, la, haq, jiu, weshu, sku, in, la, surdu, yu. Wahana, san, na, isbase.
Very standard across, and so that was really important to me that we were looking at those systems pieces too. You know, just as a reminder to our families out there, our mental health hotline will continue to operate through the summer. We'll have those services available. Also, you know, if you feel like your student needs something and they're in summer programming, we have a school-based mental health partner at every school, as well as a school social worker who are there to meet those students' needs. If your student isn't in summer school, call the hotline and we'll get you connected to more supports as we're going on. And then really looking, this week, our teachers have the opportunity to attend a mental health institute. We're having two strands, one for classroom teachers and our ESP staff, and one that's more of a deeper expertise for our school social workers, school counselors, licensed school nurses, and school psychologists. So really looking forward, I know we're halfway through that, really excited about the learning that's happening there. We're also going to be offering that in the fall for those teachers who couldn't and other staff who couldn't participate this week with summer school starting and everything. It was a really busy, busy week, so we'll be moving forward with that. And also looking forward as part of the parent participatory evaluation process, our parents said they were really interested in having a parent institute, so we're working on that this summer also.
Thank you. I think it's really important, especially for a lot of those students who didn't get their appeals to be heard, that they continue to receive the support from the district.
Thank you, Student Rep. Gabor Meskell. Director Jordane, I saw your hand up, and I saw your hand go down. Just wanted to make sure you have an opportunity to speak. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I believe, I believe Rochelle Cox answered, answered my question I was thinking of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Arnison?
Thank you. I just want to check Director Inz, Director Ali. Do either of you have questions? Nope. Okay. Great. Well, I do have a couple questions slash comments if, if we have a moment, if that's okay. I'm just going to take my mask off so you can hear me. Okay, so, one, I just want to thank you all for, for presenting. I'm kind of looking both ways. The superintendent's to my right, and the screen is in front of me where I can see Associate Superintendent Cox and Senior Officer Moore, so forgive me as I kind of go back and forth here, it's a little awkward. All right, but I do want to thank all of you for being here tonight and for providing this information. I think this is a really good opportunity to monitor so many of the goals that we talked about during this CDD process, and many, it's a very clear highlight, so I really appreciate this discussion tonight. I have a couple, just a couple of rather brief clarifying questions, if you wouldn't mind. The first, I would just say them both. The first is with the high school enrollment. I'm really glad to see more balanced numbers. I know that was a really important goal with, with this project. That said, I noticed that the South numbers appear outside of our goal, I guess, of our ideal number, and so I am just wondering if that, if we think that's related to boundaries, if it's just a large number of students who live in those boundaries, or if that might be related to something, something different, maybe a citywide program, or, or if we're expecting those numbers to, it's just kind of the transition and we expect those numbers to evolve. It looks like we have still pretty much close to 500 students per class, which would, you know, put the school at around 2,000 students, which I think is higher than we were, we were hoping for. So that's my first question. And then my second question is about the special education, special education. First, I just have a comment and just say I'm really pleased to see that such a high percentage of families with, with children with special education needs participated or in the, expressed interest in our magnet schools. I know that was something we specifically talked about with the CDD, and that, that was not happening in many of our magnet schools, and it just really wasn't accessible, the special, for children who need, have some extra special education needs. So I'm excited about that. And wondering, and this is more about placement, it not necessarily appeals, but just wanting to confirm, if I recall, we were working individually with, or in a small scale, I guess, with families or children who have IEPs and thinking about their placement. And so it might have happened in the appeal process, but it might have happened actually before, like kind of in the initial placement. So just wanting, it wasn't specifically mentioned in the appeals, but I, I believe in just wanting to confirm that we took into consideration IEPs and like services at schools and, and, and that, that process. So those are my two clarifying questions. Superintendent, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, thank you, Director Arnison, for your questions. I'll, I'll first ask Associate Superintendent Cox to respond to the special ed one, but want to make sure I'm also signaling the, the second one, which was around specifically, you're looking at the ninth grade placement trends, I believe, and you mentioned South, as in South High School, or just the general? Okay. And so Senior Officer Moore, I think the question coming up for you is, we noticed that the numbers for the South High are right, for ninth graders are, it's right around, excuse me, right around 500, and just doing simple math, and you add that over the course of the high school career, that seems to be a very large population. So how are we, yeah, four classes, so how are we managing that, or do we anticipate that those numbers will, will hold at that level?
Just kind of the cause, is that just kind of an anomaly? Is it related? I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is, is it related to the boundaries? Is the boundaries, like, do we accurately predict the boundaries? Is, are we comfortable with that number related to the boundaries, I guess?
Got it. Okay. So Superintendent, Associate Superintendent Cox, could you, could you speak to the special education question, which was really around what are, what were the considerations for students with special education and their placement? And I know the individualized education plan is a, is a key element of that consideration. And I also just wanted to reinforce the acknowledgement of our prioritization and our focus around special education throughout the comprehensive district design. You know, with close to 20% of our students qualifying for those services, I think you can see throughout the process that we've had, and even the communication and presentation tonight, how special education students continue to be lifted up and acknowledged as a critical part of our redesign of the district and the supports for them. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Associate Superintendent Cox.
Thank you. Yes, we, so we are ecstatic about what's happening at the magnet programs, and really reaching out to the principals, really gearing up for support, and really wanting to make sure that those citywide programs or programs that have specific disability areas for our students receiving more intensive services are really mirroring and being inclusive of the programming of the magnets. So if you are in a program for students with autism, and you're at the magnet for arts, you're going to see arts in your citywide program just as well as when you're included, as well as when you're in your, in your special education classroom. So very excited about that. We really focused on those federal, those students receiving federal setting three, and so those students who are getting more intensive services, as well as spending more of their time in special education than they are general education. We wanted to first make sure that, A, number one, we were following the same, what I'll call rules, as general education. So those students who are already in a high school, we were not going to move them, we were committed to keeping them where they were so that they were able to do that. The other piece that we really looked at was making sure that those students who are federal setting three students did not have places where they were moving between three schools. So we tried to really reduce their transitions, especially at grade four, five, and seven, eight, and so those kind of big transition years, we looked at making sure that we keep kids where they were, so they wouldn't have, have three transitions in a row as we were moving forward. You know, I know that our teams are, are doing a tremendous job of moving materials, moving interventions. We're having everything turned really back into our professional instructional center so we can kind of relook at it, make sure everything is complete. And then we're looking at the profiles of each of our classrooms in each of our schools so that when they arrive, we actually are going to have the interventions that we feel would work best for those students already at the school, so that we don't have a lag or a wait for those interventions. Of course, as teachers get to know their students, and as IEPs teams make decisions, they can move in and out of interventions, but we really, we're committed, and I just can't say enough about our department staff, as well as our teachers and our special education assistants who have been working so hard over the, the last couple of weeks to really make sure that we are ready to go for students and are able to pick up those interventions and that specialized services, starting day one when students are in their new site.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to answer your question, Director Arnison, Carolyn Superintendent. Yeah, I really appreciate the question, but I, I'm actually very confident in, in those numbers declining. I, I think the dependency will be the dual language program at Anderson. And so I'm expecting anywhere from 50 to 100 students that normally go to South, so there's normally pathway to South, will actually end up in Roosevelt as we build up that dual language program. So there's a pathway from the dual language program at the middle school at Anderson that will feed into Roosevelt. So that will gradually decrease those numbers at South. So, but those numbers will gradually decline each year as the, the Anderson program becomes more successful. So, so I am confident that we'll get that down to, you know, to 17, 1,800, maybe even larger eventually, or, or less, you know, as we build up the Anderson program.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. So, thank you so much. So those were my quick clarifying questions. I have more of a comment, if it's okay. Chair, if we still have a couple minutes for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Okay, good. What I just wanted to highlight, and Superintendent, feel free to expand upon this, but I wanted to highlight just that, and appreciate again that we have, one of the metrics that we were really looking at is our small, our very small schools with less than 250 students, and that we're decreasing the numbers there, but also some of our magnet schools, their, their classes are a little bit smaller, and wanting to really give a genuine opportunity for all of our schools to build the enrollment that they need. And so just wanting to, to highlight the opportunity, the kind of fortunate opportunity that we have from these federal dollars to give us a bit of a buffer. So just, just wanting to highlight that. It is a role of our, we are going to need to have, it's difficult to support schools that have less than 250 students, not only financially, but the opportunities, as we discussed extensively during the CDD, the opportunities are really just fewer for those students. So we want to build that up, but it's also nice that we have some financial cushion, cushion, I would say, to, to give us some time to do that, and for communities to truly buy into the school that's near their home. Also, a very specific thing of the federal dollars, allowing us to expand our early childhood programming in some of these buildings, and what a nice opportunity that will be for, for particularly these magnet schools. So I'm wanting to highlight that, that's my one comment, feel free to expand upon that, Superintendent, but I just felt like we should highlight that for sure. Looks like you want to expand.
Yeah, that was an okay time. Yeah, so I, the reference to the, the federal dollars, specifically, you know, the, the funding received in elementary, secondary, emergency relief dollars, one and two, we do have opportunity to address some of the early childhood work that we've been doing for so long now in Minneapolis Public Schools, and, and targeted that. But when you look at the SRR three dollars, which we do not have our application completed yet, that submission is due on October 1st, we have heard definitely the, the opportunity from the federal government to be able to stabilize what they refer to as your stabilization of staffing through this pandemic. And so because of what you just described, and the, the commitment that we've made to our school communities around shoring up resources so that they can be supportive of a well-rounded education, as well as accelerating some of those investments that we know are beneficial for students, we'll be able to capture those dollars moving forward. So those will be considerations that we'll be making based on the feedback that we receive from, again, our community advisory group, but just the general commitment that the board has made through the board budget priorities and values. So we anticipate that, you know, the timing of those funds is, is great for us, because that is what we have said all along that we're going to commit to, and it aligns very well with the stabilization of, of staffing, you know, not having to make those reductions or make those decisions about what programs we're not going to offer because we don't have enough student enrollment in those schools. We can avoid that because of the support that we're receiving from those SRR three dollars.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, that's, that's helpful, and I think it's really important to just, to just highlight that. And so my final comment, before I turn it over to Director Inz, who has a, a question, it sounds like, I just wanted to compliment and, and be note out loud that our racially isolated schools have decreased by 50%. And what, how that was, again, a really major conversation, and it's been a major conversation since I've been on the board. This is the largest decrease I've seen, for sure, since I've been on the board, which is over 10 years. So, and the, the fact that there are less extreme numbers even in our racially isolated schools certainly suggests that we're on the right track. And there's, we talk about marketing, and there was, and I just want to make a comment about that. There's always, there's always a push and pull, it feels like, between market share and marketing, and, and our offering quality education in our schools, and who should be marketing, and district support, and principals. But what I, what I want to say, when we talk about market share, and we talk about the 60%, 40% of families choosing some other, some other school, and we talk about, Mr. Moore talked a little bit about who is buying into magnets and who's, who wasn't, and I just, I feel like it's important to state, at least out loud, at least in my community, but I think in, through all of Minneapolis, the connection between race and class and school choice, and the importance of being able to be really clear in Minneapolis Public Schools about our values and the value of integration, and our belief that that's important. Because I know that in my, in, throughout Minneapolis, this is a conversation we're struggling with, with race, a conversation about race, but it absolutely applies to schools. And I was just having a conversation, as someone who is discouraged today, and her child is at one of our summer school programs, they're a Minneapolis Public School parent, and she noted that there were a variety of families taking, using our summer school program. We offer our summer school program to all families, people who go to Minneapolis Public Schools throughout the year, and people who don't. And talking to some families who were very clear that they were there for the summer, but not ongoing, and their reasons were absolutely about race and class. So sometimes it's not about our schools, it's not about what our schools have to offer, but it's about the students who are in the schools. So I, I think we just always have to remember that, and not apologize for our students, but rather embrace it and be clear about our values, and just be aware that that's a fact. We should be, we are, of course, we're aware. We should be not afraid to state that that is, at least in parts of, part of our enrollments, and parts of our, you know, quote unquote, market share. So something to think about. So, okay. Director Inz, I think you have a question.
Thank you, Director Arnison. I, I did have a few comments I wanted to make, and then sort of a general question. Can, you can hear me okay, right? Yeah. So first, I want to say I'm really grateful that, for one thing in particular, that our sped students, our special education students are given so many choices and have so many opportunities within our district, and I think that's a really unique thing, and certainly a, a really positive, great outcome of the CDD, and I'm glad to see that families are taking advantage of that, and hopefully, as people are more aware of that opportunity, they'll take even more advantage of it. And it, it might be, you know, I know we are already, in some cases, a draw for many special education families, but it's good that we can be even more so and provide that service to families in need. So I'm really grateful for that. I, I really appreciate the comment or question of Student Representative Gabor Meskell about ongoing mental health support, and I think that's something that we ought to continue to think about, other areas where we can provide mental health support for students. In this case, you know, we have a sort of a almost esoteric situation where we need to provide supports for students, but it seems like it's a natural area where we can provide more support for students in transitions, and maybe we ought to look at a more formalized, ongoing process for dealing with students in transition, and providing mental health support for students in transition in, within the district, and from outside the district, and around the district. That might be part of our regular structure going forward. And I'm also really grateful that so many of the things that we projected or hoped that would happen seem to be happening. You know, you're, there's a degree of faith that you have that things will work, and certainly we're, you know, the school here hasn't started yet, and, you know, things can change, and, you know, we, we always, there, there are, in many cases, differences, but, you know, a lot of our indicators are good. To that point, what are some of the things that maybe we're, in a general sense, not sure about and might need to adjust as we go forward? Think, you know, the, the red flags, for lack of a better word, or areas where we maybe don't have enough information yet to know what's happening or what's going to happen? I know that probably there are some of these things already that are showing up, and I know, you know, we're always looking at information and data. So I guess to that point, I'm kind of like wondering, what are some of the holes maybe in the data or information, things that we don't know? And what are we going to do about that? And then I had just a really, like a tiny, minute question. I'm wondering about the free and reduced lunch data again, and I know that last year, and there was a lot of problems in gathering free and reduced lunch data, and I'm wondering how that process is going. And this is going to sound like a dumb question, but like, what is the data on the data? So, for instance, you know, how much information do we get back from people? You know, do we keep track of that? Do we have like a, of the people that we requested that filled out the form? I know we ask everybody to fill out the income forms, and for a lot of people, they don't want to do it, you know? It's like, so has that, has that gone down? Has that gone down in particular places? Like when I look at the Wellstone free and reduced lunch data, you know, that to me is like a, oh, maybe people aren't filling out those forms, and that's why we're not getting that. And, you know, we talked about that at a couple of the meetings, but I'd like to see some more information about that, and at that school in particular as well. And I want to know what we're doing about that. So, and then I just want to sum up, like, I want to sort of echo some of the comments of Director Arnison, and I, I want to sort of pull back and take a look at the big picture here, and note that, you know, we, we started this process, obviously, a long time ago. There's been a lot of different things that have driven what we've done, and we've sort of, everything's been sort of sifted down and distilled at some point or another, and we got to a point where we said, you know, our schools are more segregated than our city is. Granted, our city, oh, is that my hair a buzzer? My time's up now. But our schools are more segregated than our city, and so we're going to do what we can about that. Our choice process is contributing to greater segregation in our schools than we have in our city. And I, you know, I think that I am proud of the fact that we have done what we can, but we have to continue to remember that those are our values, as Director Arnison said, and that is, that is what we're trying to achieve through this process, so we have to keep that lens on things. We are not going to be able to, as Minneapolis Public Schools and as the Minneapolis School Board, we're not going to be able to solve school segregation. We're not going to be able to do it, you know? And we can do what we can, but there are so many other entities and policies and forces at play that we have no control over. You know, we have state policies that we have to accept, we have federal policies, and then we have free will of, among people, you know? And all those things come into play and impact where we are. So when I think about this past month and the school integration lawsuit, and just the idea that school districts are being sued, not really school districts, but states, right? And then they try to kind of pass the buck down to the school districts, I think. Like, it's impossible task that we're being handed, and it's, it's not really right. And also, to expect us to make changes that are going to solve this problem is really denying the nature of the problem, and it's not going to help. So I'm proud that we're doing what we can. We're not going to be able to fix everything, and certainly we're not going to be able to solve the issue of school, school segregation as a school board, but, you know, I am proud of the work that we have done. So, and with that, I guess I'll turn it maybe back to either Superintendent Graff or a comment on what, you know, what we're looking at, and maybe also Senior Officer Moore. I don't know. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Director Inz, for your comments. I think just to start with where you ended, we are continuing to work to create conditions for success, you know? And if I've learned anything in the last 16 months or 18 months, whatever it's been through the pandemic, it's the importance and significance of public education and what we value and how we communicate those values. To your point, we will not be able to undo what exists within our city. At the same time, we have taken approach of dismantling and redesigning our structures and our systems with our policies, and that is a, both a necessary and a bold move, because we know the implications of what that means should nothing else happen in our city. Those are the steps we can take, and so I appreciate your comments with it, appreciate the board's commitment of the values, and helping us continue to move down that path, knowing that we are going to have to make adjustments. As you mentioned, the support of mental health and the, the need for maybe us to consider how do we assist in transitioning that. That is something that has universally come up again, time and time again, when we talk about what do we need to do to, to move through this pandemic and into the future. It's to have that mental health support, and that idea of transition is so critical from our earliest learners coming into school, from our elementary students transitioning to middle school, and then to high school, as well as just a general transition. So I, I do appreciate you lifting that up and know that that has been part of a discussion already with our, our advisory group around mental health, and Student Representative Gabor Meskell has been a big part of that. So I look forward to more progress in those conversations moving forward. You also mentioned around what, what will be different, or what haven't we seen yet with the, with, you know, data perhaps? And I'll, I'll share a little bit of speculative things, and then maybe ask Senior Officer Moore to, to talk about that, what he sees from a data lens, as well as, we might need to come back to getting more information on the free and reduced lunch, because I, I have, again, you know, some anecdotal comments that I've heard from people around just how difficult it is to, to capture that data. And I think we are also faced with a balance of respecting where individuals are with their privacy and the cautiousness of, you know, the application and filling out forms. I think we've heard from staff and, and other members of the district who have children in the, the school district who have said, I've been asked to fill out the forms, you know, repeatedly, and we're trying to do it in a way that does not encroach on someone's decision, but also lets them know, like, this is valuable information that we can utilize. So I would say we probably want to try and get more information for you specifically around Wellstone, what does that look like? And then just what do those numbers look like as we compare across the district? I know when talking with our, our government relations lobbyist, Josh Dunham, he's, he's significantly said the challenges are there, you know, across the state, but I can get more information on that. Regarding the, what we don't know around data, I think, again, we're, we're mindful that these are projections, and this is what we have today. I will acknowledge we're still transitioning from a space of 18 months, or whatever it's been of a pandemic, into maybe a new space and a new era, and, and new opportunities for families where they're partaking in summer experiences, which might influence their decisions again in the fall, as well as we've expanded some of our, our, our discussions around our lottery, and how will we look at our lottery and monitor that carefully, as mentioned tonight. You know, we did our first lottery draw, and did we get enough information out to families with that? So I think that, again, more messaging around the lottery and what the outcomes are of lottery requests, I think could change some of those numbers going forward. And, and just knowing that the word-of-mouth transition will also play into that. As families settle in to their new school, they'll have a reaction to it optimistically, and hopefully it'll be positive, but also knowing that it's, it's an individual experience, and so I think that will play a huge part in how we respond to those situations. And so I think that will play a huge part in how we respond to those situations. So those are a few of the, just the kind of the reflections I have around it, but I'll turn it over to, um, Senior Officer Moore and see if he has any more specifics around data or anything further to add around the free and reduced lunch, um, kind of indication that we've seen over the last several months.
Thank you Superintendent Chair Ellison, Director Arnson. I, I really do appreciate that, and I'll just elaborate, the Superintendent mentioned the data. So, so these are projections based upon a new model. Um, and, and so our, our projection model, uh, we had a bit more leeway because as we, you know, had wider attendance areas, we had more of a zone approach, uh, we were able to place students in different locations. We're now in a attendance area, essentially that's where students attend school. Uh, so, so as we're making projections, I'm waiting to see what the data looks like in October, uh, actually September, to see if our projections are holding true. After 2122, our projections will be stronger because we'll clearly know who attends a particular school. So, so we're just transitioning and I, I think, um, very blessed to, to have some additional resources through ESSR to help us transition, uh, through a year that, that's unknown. So I think that's the, the big pieces. These are projections. You know, we do what we can and, and what, what is in our control, um, as mentioned, and we talked about integration and, and availability of housing, what's in our controls to have stronger schools and to address them, the, the inequities across our, our district relative to zip code. And so I do believe we're entering 2122, uh, with a, a, a very, uh, very concrete approaches to address those inequities. The ability for us to be successful, this is very technical plan at the beginning. Now we're moving to the adaptive phase, which is climate and it's going to be imperative that our, our principal and our teachers at our schools embrace those new families. When we talk about our projections, we know that students are identified to attend schools. Now it's going to come down to, uh, the extent to which our principals and teachers are welcoming those new communities in relative to our climate framework. I've seen some very nice signs even of students, uh, as a shared, uh, previous, a previous board member, uh, where students are welcoming other students. I mean, that's climate. It's, it's that personal touch, it's the relationship, uh, approach now, this is on relationships, that's really going to allow those families to feel welcome as they move into their new communities. And that's the adaptive work we talk about. The technical work is changing the boundaries, uh, of changing the approach from more of a zone model, uh, to a community school model of having centralized magnets. But now we're, we're entering the phase of, of our principals showing their models of leadership, our teachers showing their leadership and embracing new families and making people feel welcome. I do believe we have stronger schools moving forward. But Director Arnson, I, I do think that these are projections that the Superintendent mentioned. And, uh, and so I'm waiting to see to what is in our projections, the first year we attempted to do this, um, going to a community school model, uh, for the first year to what is to do the whole, true or not. And then I'm very confident because of our team, uh, both at the Superintendent, senior, uh, senior level, my colleagues, our principals, that we're going to meet our outcomes, uh, as identified in the CDD. And again, this is the first year and I feel very positive with the data that, that we're sharing. But I, I'm looking forward to the next presentation, uh, to see, uh, the actuals and, and to see what we need to build upon. But there will be something that we need to build upon and as Superintendent mentioned, certainly the lottery, I'm very excited. Next year, as we're in person, uh, we did previously have plans to get on the ground and do outreach and, and do the mobile, uh, enrollment registration. So I'm very confident we do have a plan to again, increase the number of folks that are, are participating in our lottery process next year. But, but it's a testament to the team and to those that work in Minneapolis and the families. We, we were working through a pandemic and we've worked through a lot of emotional, uh, work and still working through that with the, with all the events that have happened in our city regarding race and, uh, police brutality. And, and so we, we come forward and, and, and we're ready to go in the fall and, and I think we'll have a, be a stronger Minneapolis Public Schools. But looking forward to seeing the numbers and presenting that to all of you, uh, to see the extent to which our assumptions hold. And I'm, I'm kind of fired up. I, I'm very happy with, uh, um, the direction we're heading and, uh, thank you all for, for your support as a, as a board that puts the issues of equity and race at the forefront. Uh, that, that's really important to folks. So, so thank you board members for that, for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And thank you, um, directors for your questions. Um, Director Sorio, do you make questions or comments this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I wanted to, um, uh, go back into the mental support issue. I mean, that's something that is very bear and personal to me. Uh, and I'm extremely grateful that our district actually, you, we do have therapists on site. That's something that is not the reality for other districts. And, um, I, I want to ask, uh, so we mentioned that, um, we have therapists on every single school, correct? And, um, now how do we ensure also that we do have therapists that are bilingual and bicultural, uh, when it comes to like schools like Anderson, for example, and Jefferson too? So do we have enough therapists and how do we ensure that we do provide that support? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Director Sorio, thank you for your, your support and, uh, comments regarding the, the mental health, uh, uh, school-based mental health, um, supports that we have. I will ask Associate Superintendent Cox to give a little more, more detail on it. What we do have right now are contracts, um, at all of our schools. And so to be clear, that, that is support that, um, did take place this past spring. And it's, um, something that we recognize as a need and we were grateful to be able to, to make those contacts and those, those connections. But specifically to your question on how do we ensure that we have, um, individuals who are culturally and represent, uh, uh, you know, language needs of support, I'll ask Associate Superintendent Cox to kind of give, give an update on how we monitor that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So each of our agencies has to go through a, a RFP process. So they go through a pretty stringent, um, review and, um, being able to, um, have cultural relevancy and competency that matches our schools is one of our number one priorities. Once they make it into that, that pool and we kind of, then they get to be in the pool, each of our schools has the opportunity to, um, interview each of the, um, the agencies to look for matches, um, for, um, demographics, who their therapists are, looking at cultural competency of the agency as we move forward. We also realized that being able to support Minneapolis Public Schools, it takes some infrastructure for an agency, right? And so we realized that we have a lot of expertise in our community, both with, um, our external stakeholders and small agencies and individual mental health therapists, as well as we have a lot of expertise and cultural, um, expertise in our district. So what we started this year was something we called the cultural consultancy. And what we did was ask people to apply who thought that they had something to bring from a cultural aspect to Minneapolis Public Schools. We accepted everybody and we offered them mini grants, um, so that we could connect them with schools who needed expertise and consultancy in the area of, of, um, culture as, in, in relation to mental health supports. That has been one of the most exciting things we've done and we've really been able to, not only support our schools in a really different way and having them be in an interactive process with the consultants, but also to lift up the expertise of our community members as well as our internal staff to really provide support outside of their job role. Or maybe they're not able to go through our RFP process because as I said, it does take, you know, quite a bit of interest, infrastructure to be able to do that. So we're really excited. We started that this spring. Several of them are also working with us for our Mental Health Institute this week. So we're really excited about that. And then they'll start a new contract. We'll start out with, with small mini grants and as the need continues, we'll look at, at funding those and providing additional funding. So, um, just a shout out there. We'll continue to work with our networks to, um, make sure we get the word out. And again, as I said, we really want to make sure that we are lifting up our community providers. We're also, um, again, we also know our parents are experts, right? And so how do we lift them up and making them, um, partners in this idea of supporting not only the mental health needs of our, of our students and families, but also their wellness? So sometimes I think, um, I, I'm sometimes surprised when people are like, we don't have enough mental health supports. And I think, wow, we have a lot of mental health supports, right? So why need to make sure that we're framing in a way that's culturally respective so that people understand that mental health is not just about illness, but it's also about wellness and that we're really supporting that through the district, um, in all levels, in all grade levels and then also our families. I think our agencies have done a great job as well as our, our, our staff that work for, that work in Minneapolis of supporting families through the pandemic. And I think we'll continue to open that up to make sure that, um, we're not only supporting just the students, but that whole family unit.
Thank you. Director Elamene.
Thank, thank you, Chair Ellison. And everyone, good evening. I do apologize that I have been some issues with my camera, so I am here with just audio only. But I did, wanted to just make, um, several comments in regards to the adaptive piece of the plan. Glad to hear that the principals and associate superintendents will be working more closely to the families so that they're more accessible to our families within our community. But I'm also, um, a little concerned about the numbers and I know we don't have everything yet and it won't be available until, um, the start of next school year. With our schools trying to keep those numbers over the 200 within our inner city schools, um, I'm just hoping that we will continue to work diligently to make sure that we can do everything possible to make sure that those numbers stay, um, above that, to prevent any type of closure or anything that may have to come to the table, but also to make sure that these adaptive piece, um, is not just a temporary situation, that we make that the model and the expectation as we move on throughout our school years so that we are better to tell our stories and have more success stories to share within our community. So, um, just those two concerns, I guess I wanted to just share and maybe one of you can give me some insight on that, please. Thank you.
Director Elamene, thank you for, uh, your, your comments and acknowledging, um, what I heard to be two pieces. One was just the, the close connection to our, our families from our building administrators and, uh, associate superintendents. And again, the role of the associate superintendent is to provide that, that support, um, for the respective school they oversee and more specifically the, the building principal. But certainly that has been the, the communication and the, the practice, um, over the last several weeks of those transitions that are happening for, um, for families, you know, to make sure that we are as best as possible handing off those, those transitions so parents can start to feel the, the new environment and what that will be like for their child as they, um, they take on a new, new pathway of learning in that school or school community. And then regarding the, the numbers of, um, schools that we have that are under 250, that was again, a, a very, um, very hotly debated conversation about how do we address the, the low enrollment that we have throughout the district? And, and certainly we felt a multifaceted approach was the best way to do that, looking at not only the, the programming and what we're offering, but the, um, policies and practices that we have around our, um, enrollment as well as the, the boundary changes and the climate, uh, framework. So a myriad of approaches to address a, a myriad of, of needs, but, um, I think from a, from an efficiency and from a, a financial practicality, you know, the school's enrollment has to be built up in order for it to be sustained. And so we made a conscious decision to, to move with a comprehensive design so that we could divide, you know, conditions for success at all of our schools. You know, commitment has been and we need, you know, for the next three years to, uh, create the, the greatest opportunity for success. And as mentioned by, I think, a couple of other directors' conversations, you know, we, we have, um, an amount of what we can control and we're, we're going to continue to, to do that. We also recognize that, um, not everyone may be aligned to some of our values. So it's incumbent upon us as we move forward each year with implementation to reevaluate where we are successful within our control and to, to be core about messaging that, um, those positive strengths and those things that are happening. So I appreciate you lifting that up and recognize that, um, you know, we, we have made a reduction of the number of schools on that, um, list of less than 250. But we have a few more that we want to work on. And I think, again, it's, it's something that's going to happen, um, to the best of our abilities, um, over the next couple of years. So I appreciate, um, the conversation around that.
Thank, thank you Superintendent. Thank you.
Chair, Chair Ellison, I apologize for interrupting, but I'm having a hard time hearing you with the audio. And I, I know you have, um, information that, um, is really important for us to hear. So if I could ask you, maybe try again and see if I can hear what you're saying?
I had a, had something covering, okay, the speaker.
That's much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I was thinking folks on the appeals process and, and just talking about personally the struggles that I've gone through, um, with some of the emails we've received. As a parent with four children, sometimes in three different schools, I was saying it's hard. It's a hard thing to do and this was a choice that me and my family had made, but it's still difficult. And I know some of the, um, some of the emails that I'm getting are from parents with ninth graders who are being placed in schools different than their older siblings, um, in high school. And that was one thing I never, ever had to deal with, having more than one child at a high school age in two different schools. And so as we go forward, I don't know what kind of changes we can make for this year, but as we talk about lessons learned, um, I'm hoping that's something that we're looking at, um, how we're dealing with siblings specifically, um, who either because of family circumstances have to move or because of the different, the lines that we've drawn, the new lines that we've made, um, their younger siblings are ending up in schools not the same as their older siblings. And so just a couple of comments. And so if one of you want to tackle, there's more comments than questions, but, um, but thank you for this work.
Yeah, Chair Ellison, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Again, I think for what I heard there is the, the ongoing challenge of anytime you take on a, um, a boundary change, uh, like this, and we think that to the point that was made earlier, maybe through a director's comment about the number of schools we have, um, in the population enrollment. And again, we're trying to, we're trying to create conditions for success across the district. And we have over 60 schools and, um, see significant disparities of what programs are being offered throughout our schools and recognize that the, the way to build up those programs is to be able to have resources in those schools. It does take a shift of, um, population. And, and we, we made the conscious decision to do this, um, at once versus over a period of time because we felt it was too critical for us to, to make this shift, you know, with the values that the board has shared and what we, we hold to be important in terms of, um, our schools, um, needing to be adequately. be important in terms of our schools needing to be adequately, having those opportunities for kids. We didn't have years and years to move through this. We had to make the decision with the boundary change, which again is one, one part of the comprehensive district design, but it is one that I know has a great deal of emotion attached to it, as you already mentioned, in the emails that you've received. So our commitment does remain to ensure that we're monitoring things and putting supports in place where we can and knowing that this year is a crucial year and asking families to give us the time to build the supports for their students as they enter that new space, build the supports around them, you know? The experiences that they may have had with one child will certainly be different with this child as they're coming into the space. And so I just, again, recognize that that's a difficult transition and through every boundary change that I've been through, you know, these things continue to come up. And just know that we'll continue to monitor our process moving forward in the future, but appreciate all the care and commitment that people have provided at this point with our process for making these transitions.
Thank you, Superintendent. And you know, Kate, I was one of those board members with all of you. I am completely behind this confidence of district design. I believe in it and want to see it. I believe it's going to be successful and it's going to work for our students. We can do great things. So thank you, Superintendent. Seeing no more raised hands, if we can close out the discussion part of this evening, is there anything else you would like to say, Superintendent, in closing?
Yes, I would like to acknowledge that this is our final school board meeting for the 2021 school year. And I won't go into a great length of detail around what this means in terms of reflection, but I would just offer to the board, our staff, the public in general, that, you know, we've been through a lot this past year and obviously an understatement, but throughout that timeframe, we've had a lot of opportunities for us to celebrate some successes that we've had as well. And so I'd just like to encourage others to, as you reflect back on the year as we close out this school year, you know, take some time to acknowledge the work that you've done, either in the classroom, in your department, in your position as a director. Acknowledge that this has not been easy and it has not been something that we could have anticipated, but more than just surviving, I think we have accepted the challenge and we have, as mentioned already here, have kind of doubled down our energy and our commitment to what we're doing. And so I just want to say thank you to the board for all the work that you've done and the support that you've provided for the district and our students, families and staff. Thank you, Chair Ellison.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Senior Officer Moore, Associate Superintendent Pax and your teams, and thank you, directors, for tonight, this conversation, this discussion. I'm now going to adjourn tonight's meeting, our last meeting of the school year, like Superintendent said. We will meet again in August. Please get outside, get some fresh air, take a breath, get some rest. So thank you. Good night.